And with that, I will introduce myself. My name is Sam Gold and I am the Executive Director of the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, also known as RiverCog. And another guest. We have been working on for the last, I'd say nine months, on a regional housing plan that that includes working on affordable housing plans for 12 of our 17 member municipalities. And I'm just going to remind everyone when you join, please mute yourself. There will be, you can unmute yourself when we have questions, but while while we're presenting, we'll keep everyone muted. So RiverCog received funding through our our Regional Services Grant, which we put towards this project. A number of years back, the General Assembly passed a law called Section 830J, which requires every municipality in Connecticut to create an affordable housing plan every five years. The five years, the first five years is almost up. It'll be up in June, and so we are, we are working with our towns through the spring to to create a draft affordable housing plan for the city to adopt and and for the city to transmit to the state to fulfill this requirement. We are doing this in concert with other towns and in concert with a regional housing plan. So we understand how the housing markets in the city and in the surrounding towns interrelate and how and how we could all work together in various ways to increase the accessibility of affordable housing, but also address a number of the housing issues that we have that are affecting our demographics. But I won't go too far into that because I will be, I'll be stealing the slides away from from our very able consultant team. So with that, I will introduce Robert Collins, who is our Project Manager from our consultant team. And Karen Martin will be joining him in the presentation. And I also want to welcome, let's see, we have Margot Burns, our Senior Environmental Planner from RiverCog, joining us this evening. Kellen Atherton, who's who, in addition to being on P&amp;Z, is also one of our regional planning committee members at RiverCog. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Merrick, your City Planner, to to further introduce the mayor and this project. So go ahead, go ahead, Merrick.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us today. I just want to just throw the baton to Mayor Florsheim to kick off our meeting tonight. Thanks.
All right, great. Thanks, Mark. Thank you, Sam, and thank you all for for being here. My name's Ben Florsheim. I have the great privilege to serve as Mayor of our city. And I'm really grateful to RiverCog and the team at SLR and Taike and and the team in Mark's office, in the Office of Land Use and in Mark's, in his role as City Planner and Director. It's been an amazing team working on this plan over the last number of months. And so grateful for their work on that, grateful for their presence here tonight, and really looking forward to the discussion that we're going to have, and grateful to all the folks who are here, who are taking time out on a beautiful, you know, first of this, one of the first of the season sunny evenings to be here tonight to discuss a very important topic. And we have some of our Planning and Zoning Commission members here, as well as a number of other. I know I see, I see some folks I recognize and don't, which is always a good sign. So looking forward to hearing everybody's input. But, you know, I think that one thing that we can probably all agree on from from the start is the the biggest challenge that we face as a state and to an extent, you know, to a broader extent, I should say, as a city and to a broader extent as a state, is is the cost of living in Connecticut is the is the cost of living that is driven by a number of factors from 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 property taxes to energy costs to to transportation, to any number of things. But one of the really primary ones is is the housing supply across all price points, but particularly a supply of affordable housing. And that is an area where we have, we have not planned as a state in the way that we should. That's what this law is seeking to correct. It's, it is an area where in Middletown, we have, we were talking before we got started with where Middletown has has stepped up and and has welcomed affordable housing and has also in many ways been a model for the state in terms of the partnerships that our our Housing Authority and our and our private landlords and others have have managed to develop over the over the years to to make affordable housing a really positive asset to the community. And there's also more that we can do. There's more that we can do to improve the status quo. And there's more that we can do to improve access to affordable housing, again, across the across the price point spectrum, across the development spectrum in in our community and in our state. And that doesn't necessarily mean new, a lot of new construction, right? It can mean, as it should mean in our state and in our region of the country where we have aging infrastructure. It should mean reinvestment in older homes, older properties, of which we have many in our community that can be better used to provide affordable and decent housing for our residents. And and, you know, beyond that, it's a question really of making sure, again, that we are that we are shoring up our status quo, that we are shoring up our existing housing stock, that we are trying to work and establish better conditions and better relationships with 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 those who are in affordable housing and those who are who are working to make housing available in our city. And there is, there's more that we can be doing as a state to to continue moving us in the direction that we need to go, which is, which is more housing across all price points and a better cost of living situation for for all of our residents. So that's what this plan is is all about. I want to, again, just thank everybody for 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 the role that they played. Thank again, the, they're not, not here tonight, but but the Housing Authority for for setting just such a great example of what is possible in in affordable housing. And I have no doubt that with the right plan in place, you know, we are, we are, we, it's unfortunate that it had to be our requirement under state law to to get municipalities planning in this direction. But I think it's going to be because Middletown is Middletown, because we have the track record that we have. I think it is going to be a huge asset to our community that we are going to be moving in this direction. So thank you all for being here. Looking forward to the discussion. And Mark, I will pass it back over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add to the point that Middletown is also in a position where we can actually plan for housing. You know, we're not in a position where, like many other municipalities in our regions, where they have the the fear of of creating affordable housing under the mandates of the state law. But we have met our requirements for the state, and now we can work and plan and fill all the housing needs, as you mentioned, and as at the various price points and to satisfy the housing needs for the residents of Middletown. So with that, I'll just pass it to this SLR team to begin their presentation.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Excellent. Hi, everyone. As Sam had introduced, my name is Karen and I'm from SLR. And I'm going to start us off by sharing my screen here so that we can get started. Okay, hopefully everyone can see that. Okay, so just to get started, you know, as we, as we covered, this is a multi, multi-group, multi-team effort here. And we have been really grateful to be working with some great partners. Obviously, as Sam introduced, RiverCog has been spearheading this project. And as one of the consultant team members, SLR, we've been working side by side with Taike Planning and Policy Group, as well as Goman and York Advisory Services. And obviously, the city of Middletown, we've been working with Merrick, the Planning and Zoning Commission, to get us this far. So thank you, everyone who's been involved. But just a quick preview of what we're going to cover tonight, we're going to try to get it through it as quickly as we can. But first, we're going to just kind of offer some introductory background information on what is affordable housing and this 8-30J state statute and requirement to create a housing affordability plan. And then specifically, we're going to zoom out, zoom in and look at what does this specifically mean for Middletown. We're going to do a quick review of some various resources that give some important kind of data and background foundation and information for how to view housing and housing affordability. And that will include looking at some existing conditions in Middletown today, including demographics and housing conditions, as well as housing needs. So how can we assess what the current housing needs are? The mayor and Merrick did a great job of kind of pointing out some of the kind of current themes and landscape in Middletown and how Middletown is unique in the region and even in the state. But that does not mean that there are still not needs here that need to be met in terms of housing affordability. And then after we've kind of presented all of that information, we're going to move into the last section, which discusses some potential housing strategies. So the purpose of the 8-30J Plan, the reason that we're doing this is to identify some actionable items for how Middletown and all municipalities across the state can add affordable housing. And to do that, we need to identify some strategies. So we're going to present some potential strategies, and we have a live polling component that we're going to do. So that's the interactive portion of this presentation, where we hope that you will participate and help give us some feedback on the strategies that we're discussing. And if we have time, hopefully at the end, and anyone has any additional questions, we will open it up to a Q and A session. So to get started, what is your role tonight? Why are you here? Why are you listening? And what, what are you going to be able to get out of this evening? So we hope that your role tonight will be to learn more about affordable housing and why it's important to your community. Affordable housing and concepts of housing affordability can be very nuanced. They can be rather confusing. And having a solid foundation and kind of understanding some of the key concepts and having them explained in an understandable way can do a lot in order to expand how people view and understand kind of what we're talking about when we talk about these various state statutes and requirements and the purpose of this plan. We hope that you'll be able to provide us with input on the potential affordable housing strategies for Middletown so that we can take that to move forward into starting to draft the actual plan itself and have a final version ready for adoption. And then at the end, we hope that you'll ask any questions that you might have on this subject, either things that we covered or things that we didn't cover and you'd like to learn more about. If you do have any questions that pop up at any point during the course of the presentation, we ask that you type them in the chat. They'll just be collecting in the chat if you have something that comes to mind at any point, just write it in there. We'll be keeping track of them, and then at the end, we will revisit them and answer them. Or you can save your questions to the end, and we'll just answer them then. So whatever works for you, we're be happy to answer everything that we can. I did also just mention there will be a live polling component that we're going to do a little later on. And this just requires you to either have a second device. So if you're watching on a computer and you also want to grab a phone or a tablet, or if you're on a computer and you can open a second browser window so that you have two tabs open so you can be watching the presentation, but then also doing something in a second tab. Anything that allows you to kind of be doing both at the same time will let you partake in our live polling. So just a heads up. Okay, so just to get started. First, as Sam mentioned at the very beginning in his introduction, we are doing this project in concert with RiverCog, and we are looking at this from a regional level. So there's two main components to this overall project. One is a regional housing analysis, and then one is individual plans for each of these 12 member communities. So last year, if you may have been involved, RiverCog adopted a regional plan of conservation and development for the entire cog, and it focused on the importance of addressing housing affordability. So the next step was to then work at the same regional level to develop a housing plan. So the outcomes of this process is going to be creating one regional housing analysis plan. And that's going to kind of be the umbrella document, and it's going to talk about housing, housing availability and housing needs for all of RiverCog, for all of the Lower Connecticut River Valley region. And we're working on drafting that as well, and it's going to kind of be the big picture, what's going on in the whole region. And then individually, kind of under that umbrella, we're doing these individual plans for each of the municipalities. And there are kind of, as this graphic on the right hand shows, each part of the process will inform the other. So one just feeds into the other. Whatever, you know, is happening at the regional level impacts what's happening at the municipal level, and what's happening at the municipal level impacts what's happening at the regional level. So those are the two levels of products that we're going to ultimately have when we get to the end of this process. So just to talk about what is affordable housing? You know, the term is thrown out there a lot. You hear it and read about it all the time. But we actually have to like zone in and talk and consider what does this actually mean? So affordable housing is typically defined as housing that costs less than 30% of the monthly income for households that earn below the area median income. So that's a typical definition, but even that is kind of full of jargon and probably not necessarily that understandable. So if we boil it down even a little bit further, what does it really mean? So the aim of affordable housing, this concept also can, we can reverse it and call it housing affordability, is to create these housing affordability options for households that earn less than the median income in their part of the state. And in order to be attainable and sustainable for these groups specifically, the housing should cost no more than one-third of what these households earn. So that's really the main idea and the main takeaway. And when we talk about affordable housing, it can be helpful to talk about it and think about it in two different categories. So the first would be what we call naturally occurring affordable housing. So naturally occurring affordable housing is housing that, if you're, you know, kind of maybe looking on, maybe you're looking on Zillow, and you see housing that's, you know, in the in the market, and it might cost a relatively low amount, either the rent or the price of a home. It may cost a low-income household less than 30% of their income, but it's not protected in any way. It's subject to market conditions, so it's not protected from increasing, nor is it reserved in any way for low-income occupants only. The these naturally occurring affordable units are open to anyone regardless of their income. So there's no way that we can assure that they're going to be reserved only for low-income occupants. So the other category of housing that we have to look at when we talk about affordable housing is what we call protected units. So protected affordable housing units is housing that is reserved for low-income occupants, and it's restricted through either a deed restriction or a subsidy to cost no more than 30% of these households' income. So it's targeted for these specific types of income groups, and it's guaranteed to be affordable and attainable for them in this protected state. So who is affordable housing targeting? You know, who, when we talk about affordable housing, who qualifies? Who could potentially live in affordable housing? Typically, these are incomes, households that are earning less than 80% of the area median income. But this can be a household of any size. It can be an individual who lives alone. It can be a family of a range of sizes. We're talking about renters and homeowners, all age groups of people. And often, we're talking about workforce housing, people who live in your local community, who need to be able to afford, people who work in your local community, who also need to be able to afford to live there, are a prime target for affordable housing. So this is kind of the group that we have in mind. And why is this really important? So a few reasons why it is, you know, important to address and offer housing affordability options. Households that spend too much of their income, which would be defined kind of typically as spending more than 30%, they're considered to be cost burdened, meaning they're spending too much of their income on their housing. And the issue with being cost burdened is that if you're spending too much of your income on your housing costs, you're not going to have enough leftover income at the end of the month for other important needs, which can include food, transportation, clothes, medical costs. So this is why it's important to really keep housing costs at this 30% or less level. And ultimately, affordable housing options help these lower-income households from becoming cost burdened by the high housing costs in Connecticut. As the mayor was mentioning, Connecticut is an extremely expensive state, so it takes effort to ensure that there are housing options for these groups. So there can tend to be a misconception that there's only one type of affordable housing and that it's a large multifamily apartment building with multiple stories, you know, a very dense-looking, you know, building that has a lot of people in it and that there's only one style and one type. But this is actually not true at all. There is no one-size-fits-all approach to creating housing opportunities for the groups that I just described. They can range in terms of form and shape, style. And these are just some examples, but not all of the types of just appearances and styles of affordable units, whether it's people that live in an owner-occupied, single-family home, rent a private apartment. They may live in something like an accessory dwelling unit or perhaps the more somewhat traditional mixed-income, medium-to-hire-density apartment community. But ultimately, as you'll learn through this presentation, due to just the different ways there are to achieve affordable housing, there is no one standard look or type. So we've kind of alluded a couple of times to Connecticut state statutes and what Connecticut state policies and programs there are that relate to affordable housing and affordable housing requirements. There are two key pieces of legislation in Connecticut that we are typically talking about and that we're going to be addressing this evening. The first one, which many people are at this point relatively familiar with, is Connecticut State Statute 8-30G. This has been around since 1989. This is the law that set up what's called the Housing Land Use Appeals Procedure, where it defines what is a protected unit. It requires that if a developer wants to put in a development that they are going to meet and prevent, provide 30% affordable units in that development that meets the set income limits and cost maximums that I just described, that are defined by the state. And it sets up that if a town has reached 10% or more of its housing stock as affordable under these conditions, it no longer has to receive these types of applications from developers. But those that have not reached the 10% are still susceptible to these developments, which are then exempt from local zoning requirements and are difficult to deny. I think as either Merrick or the mayor mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, Middletown is in a relatively unique situation in that it has met its 10% goal, and therefore, Section 8-30G does not currently apply to Middletown. But it is still a very big picture item when it comes to the state and talking about housing affordability at the state level. But luckily, for the sake of this presentation, we won't focus on 8-30G too much because of the existing stock of affordable housing in Middletown, which is definitely an absolute positive. But what this brings us to is numerous years later, in 2017, some additional legislation was passed by the state, and this is Section 8-30J. And say, Section 8-30J kind of reframed or took a look at 8-30G and said, okay, so we do have this statute on the books, but what more can we do to encourage communities across Connecticut, kind of regardless of their 8-30G status, to be focusing on always creating and striving to create more housing affordability options for their residents? So in 2017, 8-30J was adopted. It requires all towns in Connecticut to adopt a housing affordability plan and update it every five years. The target is to identify strategies for increasing the amount of affordable housing in your community. And as Sam mentioned, the deadline to adopt these plans has now, is now upon us, and it is June 1st of this year, which is why RiverCog and SLR and our consultant team are working together to get these 12 plans adopted for each of the municipalities, of which Middletown is one. So that brings us to where we are and why we're holding this public workshop tonight. In terms of what the plan is going to consist of, the state did actually not give a lot of guidance in the state statute itself. So it actually kind of went back and reissued kind of this policy guide document that said, what should you actually include in a housing affordability plan? What should it entail and what should you look at? So this is the bottom-up approach to increase the state's affordable housing supply. They would like towns and cities across the state to show that they're going to make actionable progress. And like I said, in Middletown, it's not just to meet a goal, because you've already met it. But that doesn't mean that the need goes away, so there are still steps and still efforts to take. Each community needs to decide what strategies are best for them. We're going to look at things like creating a community value statement for Middletown. We're going to review your local land use and zoning. We're going to conduct a housing needs assessment to look at where the gaps and needs for housing still exist. And from there, as we're going to show at the end of the presentation today, we're moving into identifying some strategies for doing so. And then we're going to work on applying some best practices to implement these strategies. So we hope by the end of this evening, we'll kind of have a clear sense of how all of these things interplay and come together. So what kind of, people are always interested in, you, you know, you talk about all these concepts and AMI and 30% and cost burden, but a lot of people say, well, what are the actual numbers? What does that actually look like on paper? So if we were to look at the city of Middletown, these are the numbers and the incomes that we're actually talking about when we talk about these income levels and limits for affordable housing. So based on information that comes from HUD, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, they provide these income limits and then these budgets for monthly housing costs. So if we were to look at households that earn less than 80% of their the area median income, we're talking, and we can look at different family sizes. So we've got either an individual or a family of four. We're looking at people who are earning somewhere, it could be less than about $52,000 or less than about $80,000 if you're a larger family. And when you look at, they can, that they should be spending only about 30% of their income on their housing costs, and you calculate that out, you get these numbers in the right-hand column, which is that a household of one could pay about $1,400 per month for their housing costs, and a family of four could spend about $2,000 or less on their housing costs. So that just kind of, keep that in the back of your mind as we go through this presentation so that you can kind of just remember kind of what the limits are for these types of income groups. So as we said, this is a unique opportunity for Middletown. We're looking to create strategies and opportunities that are going to reflect your specific city needs. So this is not a one-size-fits-all approach. We know that Middletown is unique from nearly every other community in the RiverCog region because of your current status of having a lot of housing diversity and a lot of housing affordability. So the approaches that we take in Middletown are certainly going to be different than those we're going to take in some of the very small or rural communities in your area. So definitely keep that in mind. Okay, so what are we going to kind of zone in on tonight? How do we actually start this conversation? And and how do we, how do the different pieces that we're going to look at actually give us the information that we need to determine where to go with this plan? So first, we're going to do a zoning analysis very quickly. That's going to tell us what can be built in Middletown and where. We're going to look at demographics in Middletown. That's going to tell us who lives here now and who's going to live here in the future. We're going to look at housing trends in Middletown, which is going to tell us what kind of housing exists today. And then we're going to turn that into a housing needs assessment, which provides information on what housing needs are currently being met and which are being unmet. So quickly, just to go over some planning and zoning concepts. First, we pull information from an important document, which is the Town's Plan of Conservation and Development. So the Plan of Conservation and Development, or known as the POCD, is the Town's Development Guiding Document. It's updated every 10 years, and yours was recently updated in 2020. So it's a very recent document. You may have been involved in the drafting and adopting of the POCD, and it addresses development, preservation, conservation, and community goals across a huge range of categories and topic areas. For the purpose of this plan, we are kind of most interested in the housing section of the POCD. So back in 2020, which was only two years ago, what were some of the housing needs, strategies, and goals that rose to the top in the POCD? So if we consider some of the content that ended up in the final version of the POCD, we see a lot of really worthwhile and meaningful strategies and objectives that range anywhere from mixed use to creating a range of housing choices, protecting the unique character of Middletown's neighborhoods, encouraging compact building design, creating walkable neighborhoods. So a lot of this is a foundation for what we're doing now. You haven't, it's not as if you haven't addressed some of these issues, concerns, and concepts before. So we have like a good foundation in your POCD that we're going to make sure that everything that we tie to is going to be in compliance and correlation with the POCD because the affordable housing plan and the POCD should be compatible and in concert with one another. And then it's important to do kind of just this initial kind of just physical overview of kind of the zoning and what's actually like on the ground in Middletown today because zoning is a key component in what you can build in a community and where. So if we just take a quick look at your zoning map, you'll see in yellow, that's kind of the majority of the city. That is some of your lower-density residential areas. But there are a lot of colors on this map because Middletown has a lot of different zones, because you do allow a lot of different housing at different density levels. So you can see higher concentrations, the darker colors represent some of the more higher-density housing areas. So you can see higher concentrations, the darker colors represent some of the more higher density housing areas where multifamily housing is allowed, although there are definitely still many areas and many pockets of Middletown that are more exclusively single family that potentially open up some, you know, possible future development. And we have to consider, you know, what is in concert with your current zoning, but also what could be potential changes that could provide new pathways and opportunities for future development. But there are additional constraints that must be considered. So one of those top additional constraints is looking at existing infrastructure. So when we talk about development, one of the main limiting factors is is their sewer and water supply. Multifamily specifically or higher density development typically requires the infrastructure to serve it. In Middletown, as you can see on this map, the areas that are all outlined in red are your existing sewer service areas. So it does cover a pretty significant portion of the city, though not all of it, obviously closer to the center. There is more and then the prevalence of sewer service does decrease as you get closer to the periphery. But one of the goals in your P O C D was to not particularly expand any of the existing sewer area. So, you know, not the areas that are currently sewer avoidance areas are to remain so. So we're talking about opportunities to continue to redevelop, but within the current footprint of what your infrastructure currently serves. So that's one limiting factor as to what can be built where and how. And then on top of that, we can put another layer of potential constraints. This one is different. State property, land trust, protected open space, municipal property. So anything that kind of has some type of restriction on it and is not likely to be developed in the future or is protected for development from the future. So when we overlay this layer on top of the map, we see that this also will show areas where there is not going to be future development. And then on top of this, we lay a natural constraints layer. And this is mostly flood zones related to the Connecticut River. And additionally, these are areas that for natural reasons and environmental reasons would also not be developed. So when we put these kind of four layers on top of each other, although originally it might look like the whole city is open and available for housing development. Each of these layers shows that that's not actually the true story and that potential development does have to be very focused in the specific areas where it is possible. So just a few takeaways from that. Middletown has a wide range of zoning districts that permit a large range of uses and densities, but many areas of the city are single family. You have moderate infrastructure limitations and existing sewer system. But there are sewer avoidance areas. You do have some natural constraints and some protected open space areas, but there are definitely fewer than there would be in say a small rural community because Middletown does obviously have an urban nature. So that's kind of an overview there. And then to do the demographic review, I'm just going to switch it over quickly to my colleague, Robert.
Okay, thanks Karen. Nice to be with you tonight and I'm looking forward to just kind of quickly giving you a broad overview of like what the current population and household trends are within the community. So you can take that in consideration when developing this plan. Looking at population going back twenty years, the population of Middletown was generally continuing to go up. But in twenty twenty, it basically kind of stalled out and remained about consistent with where it had been in in twenty ten. However, forecasting that the state supplies us shows that the expect the expectation in the next twenty years is that it's going to continue to go up. So there will be most likely an increase in population. When you look at the the population and how it's distributed, the the trends within Middletown are actually very different for the most part than what's going on in in the region as a whole. So as all already has been mentioned, how Middletown is somewhat different, it does really show up in these types of trends. In the age distribution, there is an increase in under fifteen year age population. There's also increases in in middle age, like in the thirties and fifties. But the baby boom generation, which is sixty and older, is actually declining, which is actually very different than what's going on in Connecticut as a whole and in the region as a whole. And Middletown actually has a lower percentage of population over sixty five, which is right now at fifteen point three percent than what is we're seeing in some of the other River Cog communities where it's closer to twenty. As far as household composition, this actually does mirror similar to what's happening in the region as well as in the state. And the most, the biggest takeaway here is that household sizes in Connecticut and as a whole, as well as in Middletown are getting smaller. Decades ago, houses used to be filled with four or five persons, families, maybe with several children. But now the trend is really one or two person households. And right now, Middletown has over seventy or right at seventy percent of its population is one or two persons. So that that is kind of a smaller household and so potentially smaller units might be 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 what these folks are looking for. Looking at employment trends, there is almost thirty thousand jobs within Middletown. So it is one of the largest. It is obviously a large employment center for the region. The largest sector is in healthcare and social assistance. So we we do look at those types of people that would be in that sector that might be, you know, looking for housing within the within the town and within the region. And over eighty four percent of the workers currently coming to Middletown to work are actually coming from outside. So there's only about fifteen percent or so that are actually Middletown residents that are actually working in Middletown. And there might be a variety of reasons as to why there's a high number of folks commuting in. Might be housing or housing choice, or maybe that there's just a lot of diversity within the region already and opportunities. But we're going to take a quick look also at housing market trends. So you kind of get a flavor of where that stands related to some of the housing needs that we'll be talking about at the end. Middletown does have a different composition of renters versus owners than their than Middlesex County as a whole. There's more renters, almost fifty percent of the households are renting in Middletown as opposed to just a quarter or so in Middlesex County as a whole. Related to the housing typology, Middletown also has a greater number of smaller units already with studios and one bedrooms and two bedrooms being at a higher percentage than what you find in Connecticut as a whole, as well as in the county. And I think that's probably not surprising since we do have a little bit more diverse housing within Middletown, as we'll see on the next slide. And that's what this slide is showing and that is that only forty four forty four percent of the total housing units within the town currently are single family detached. And that is, and you can see by the 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 graph that's on the left, there is a a big variety in the different types of other types of units that range everything from duplexes and two families all the way up to eight percent of the town or the city's housing right now is fifty or more units in a in a particular building or complex. And that's also pretty, that's actually very different than what we're finding in some of the other regions of River Cog as well as in the state. And there's some communities that have almost overwhelmingly entirely single family. So Middletown does offer a greater percentage of the housing type, which allows for some greater affordability, having that diversity. As far as new construction goes, similar to Connecticut as a whole and Middletown is aligning, there has been kind of a drop off in in new housing construction permits in the last ten to fifteen years. Things were pretty robust prior to the housing boom or the housing crisis that happened around two thousand and eight. But in the last five or or so years, there really hasn't been a single year where there has been more than twenty five new permits issued within Middletown. So we know that we're dealt dealing with an existing housing stock and there's not a lot of new activity that's currently happening. Related to home values, based on census information, seventy two percent of housing within the town currently is valued under three hundred thousand. Now that, as we will look at shortly, it's important to remember that number so that we, when we go back to start looking at housing needs and what low income families can afford, we'll see that'll that does fit within the range of some of those groups. However, it's not protected and we know that those types of things could change with market condition changes very rapidly. So it is something to be cautious about, even though there is some naturally occurring affordable housing in Middletown. Same thing with rents. We see that the majority of rental units are less than fifteen hundred per month. This also fits in with what some of the low income folks would be looking for. But a lot of this information indicates that these units are not they're naturally occurring. So therefore, things could change very rapidly with the change in the market. So we want to potentially remember that and look at that as we start talking about some strategies. Okay, well, that wraps up the demographics and housing. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Karen to wrap things up with the focusing very specifically on the housing needs and then we'll get into the strategies.
Okay, great. Thanks, Robert. Okay, I will try to to run through this as quickly as possible. But basically, based on all of the information that we just provided, we then want to do an analysis of based on, you know, what exists in Middletown today and then compared to the people that live in Middletown today, how does that translate into housing needs? So what is the need for housing affordability that exists? And this is based on who lives in Middletown today and kind of what types of affordable housing in order to meet their needs might we need to address? So just again, to just touch on very quickly at the beginning of the presentation, we talked about statute eight dash thirty G, which requires each municipality in Connecticut to have ten percent of its housing stock dedicated as protected affordable units. If you remember at the beginning, we identified naturally occurring units and then we identified protected units. Well, the state is only interested in protected units because they know that those are the ones that are going to be protected and reserved for these affordable lower income groups. Luckily, as I mentioned, this is not too much of an issue in Middletown because Middletown has achieved and exceeded this goal quite tremendously. There is currently on nearly twenty two percent protected affordable units in Middletown. So obviously well past the ten percent requirement. This turns, if you look at this in in numbers, it's about four thousand seven hundred and fifty affordable housing units in Middletown. The circle graph on the right breaks this down into types of units. It can be units that receive government assistance, such as those that might exist in some of your housing authority developments. Could be people who receive tenant assistance. It could be people who are utilizing first time home buyer mortgages. When you add all those together, those all count towards your protected count. So Middletown is in great shape and, you know, honestly, compared to the rest of the state and the rest of the region, definitely deserves, I think, a great round of applause for having achieved this. However, this does not necessarily mean that all the needs in Middletown are being met. This means that you have a great existing stock of affordable housing, but it doesn't mean that everybody who has a need in Middletown has been met by this stock. So we're going to do a little bit of a deeper dig here and see what that necessarily means. So the next three slides are going to show these three gray boxes and each one of these gray boxes represents a category of income. So on the left, we have people who are in the low income bracket. Those are people making between fifty and eighty percent of the area median income. As I described at the beginning, anyone earning less than eighty percent of AMI would be considered low income. But we can break it down a little further. So we're going to have low income. In the middle, we have very low income. That's if you earn between thirty and fifty percent of the area median income. And on the right, we have extremely low income. That would be if you're earning less than thirty percent of the area median income. And this is the number of households that fall into each of these categories in Middletown today. We're looking at current residents, the people who are in your community right now and falling under this eighty percent area median income threshold. So you can see the numbers are, you know, they're, Middletown is a city and you have a high number of residents. So there is, you know, a proportion that fall under each of these categories in the two thousand to three thousand household range for each of these groups. And if you add them together, you get this number at the bottom, which is eight thousand two hundred and ninety total households in Middletown meet the definition of low income. That's forty three percent of the total number of households are earning less than eighty percent of the area median income. And then this, again, same slide set up with the same groups, the same income groups. And we're looking at how much each of these households, dependent on their income level, can afford to spend on rent each month. So it does range from very low to a little bit higher, depending on the size of your household and your income. But again, just keep these numbers in mind when we looked at that rent graph before. And, you know, we have to try to determine if there are enough rental opportunities in Middletown that would meet the people in all of these groups with these income limits. And then this is the same slide, but this is looking at homeownership. This is if the same groups of people wanted to purchase a home instead of rent one. What kind of house could they afford to purchase? And again, you can compare this to the home value chart that Robert went over. And again, we would just want to consider, can people in all of these categories actually afford to purchase a home in Middletown today? This is a couple of charts talking about cost burden, which is the concept we talked about at the beginning of people who are paying more than thirty percent of their income to their housing costs. And this is something to ideally be avoided. We want to keep those costs for low income people specifically less than thirty percent. At the top is showing broken down by age, who in what age group is spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing? And you can see that it's most likely to be either seniors, which with almost half being cost burdened or young people with almost half of them being cost burdened in Middletown as well. So those are two kind of the more vulnerable groups when it comes to paying too much for housing. On the bottom, that's showing renters versus owners, showing that renters are almost twice as likely to be cost burdened than owners. This slide is just, we just wanted to talk about the Middletown Housing Authority. It's an important component in Middletown for providing affordable housing to low income individuals and households in Middletown. The Housing Authority operates eight different housing developments. They range in size from small units to four bedroom units. Therefore, we know that they're targeting individuals. You know, small could be just two people, two couples, and then all the way up to ranging to families who obviously also have a need for affordable housing. Some of the developments are specifically targeted for the elderly and also the the disabled, while some are more targeted towards these these families. So there is a wide range and they're definitely a key component that we want to keep in mind when having this conversation. And then this slide is just quickly what we call a housing gap analysis. So this is kind of looking at where are the gaps? Basically, where are the needs still existing in Middletown for housing? And we basically do this analysis by taking your affordable housing supply. So all of the affordable naturally occurring affordable housing that you have. And we're subtracting the affordable housing demand. So how many people do you have? So basically, we're taking the available units, we're subtracting the number of people who need units and we're getting a number. And that number is either going to be positive or negative based on whether you have too many or you have enough or you don't have enough when you do this subtraction formula. And then the chart below is just showing where the gap, so where the negative numbers popped up in these different categories. And basically, where there is an X, that means that you have a housing gap. So the the boxes that don't have an X meaning means that you actually have a surplus of housing for those groups. So the areas that are popping up as kind of having the biggest gap or the biggest need in Middletown are for renters, mostly for individuals, as well as for owners for individuals. And the reason that it's very common that communities have a much neater, a much larger gap or a much greater need for housing for individuals is because it is, it can be harder to find housing that's very small in size, studios, one bedrooms. Middletown definitely has a lot, but as you saw at the very, very beginning, there's also seventy percent of all of the residents in Middletown are just one or two people living in a household. So we're talking about people who could very easily live in a small unit, a studio or a one bedroom. And if the supply isn't keeping up with the demand, you're going to have a housing gap. It's easier for families to find a home, maybe a small home or an apartment that's more their size. But this kind of focus on these smaller units and this mismatch between the size of households and the availability of small sized units and particularly rentals, but definitely also homes for people who want to buy is definitely what's driving this housing gap. So that's just something to keep in mind when we're talking about the strategies and identifying what makes sense to target the need in Middletown. Just a quick wrap up, just like zooming out a little bit, talking just slightly higher level. Why is this conversation important? Why is it important to create affordable housing? Obviously, we want to create affordable housing because people need affordable housing, but why do we want to meet that need? But why do we want to meet that need? So some things to just consider are that when a community has affordable housing and obviously Middletown already does, it will remain competitive. In the ever changing housing market, it will increase that community's ability to retain and attract jobs. It's going to contribute to the economic prosperity of the community, make them more resilient. Just a completely homogeneous community is not as resilient as one that has a lot of diversity. Obviously, Middletown is excelling in that area. We want to set up opportunities for the next generation of home buyers. We want to ensure that you're attracting a wide variety of residents through a diverse offering of housing. And ultimately, there's an economic aspect here where. Communities that have a strong housing market because they're meeting the needs and they're selling and renting out homes successfully. Remains economically viable and it impacts the city's grand list. The mill rate and ultimately the tax burden of residents. So these are some positive reasons why it really benefits communities across Connecticut. To invest in housing affordability. Okay, so we're going to move on to the strategy section of this presentation. So when it comes to housing strategies, there are many. There, there's a wide, a wide range of many, many types that can be chosen. But not one community can can tackle them all. And as we talked about at the beginning, we want each community. In the Rivercog region to pick strategies that are unique, contextual and appropriate for their community's conditions and needs. So when we look at kind of this potential bucket list of housing strategies, which ones actually make the most sense for Middletown? So if this screen that I'm showing right now is the potential, a list of potential housing strategies. We worked with Merrick and the Planning and Zoning Commission to kind of identify those that made the most sense for Middletown. And when we were kind of ultimately having that discussion. Talking about what the needs, the existing conditions, you know, the fact that we know that you have a lot of affordable housing already. So maybe you just want to fine tune those strategies, or maybe you really want to focus in on specific areas that are really going to have the most impact. We narrowed it down to five strategies that we are going to present and talk through with you this evening. And ultimately, each of the five that we chose and which I'm going to go over momentarily, can we tie back to some of the goals that you have? In your plan of conservation and development. So each of the five, we feel is specifically targeting. A specific strategy outlined in your P O C D so that we know that it's consistent with the nature, character and. Plans for the way that Middletown would like to develop over the next five to ten years. Okay, so now we're going to move into the live polling section of this presentation. As I mentioned at the beginning, if you have a cell phone, a tablet, a device that you would like to pull up. We're going to ask you to go to this URL, it's poll E V dot com. Slash S L R twenty twenty-one, the the uppercase or capital letters don't don't matter. It can be, as long as you just type it in correctly, you should. You should ultimately see. A black screen and then we're going to get started so that hopefully.
While people are getting their devices and logging in, we did get a couple of questions in the chat. And I've been, we've been trying to answer them as. And there was, and we'll just quickly go through these. There was a discussion about approaches to restrain speculation in housing, like limited equity cooperatives or rent control. I think the issue of rent control is the easier one. The city can do rent control on properties they owns. Or through the Housing Authority, but I don't, I don't think rent control statewide has been authorized by statute, so. Then unfortunately may be off the table. Limited Equity Cooperatives, I think, is an interesting idea. And something that I think, I think we should investigate further as a way of giving people another option. To to own and participate in the ownership of their of their homes, but also lower that threshold. Let's see. We also had a question about. Why are we trying to fix what's obviously isn't broken? It more than doubled the state requirement for protected affordable units, among the highest in the state. It seems like what we have been, have been doing has been remarkably successful and I wouldn't want to mess with it. Well, we, as as we went over, there is that gap analysis that still shows that there is need. But also, if you go back to the slide that shows how we're meeting the definition of affordable units under A three B G. It's almost entirely through government supported through units that are supported through various government programs. Only one percent of the affordable units in Middletown are deed restricted. Of course, there's also opportunities for affordable housing, but. Naturally occurring affordable housing that's not restricted, but but I I think there's. What what we'll see in this plan is one of the reasons why this plan is being done is because it's a state requirement that Middletown do the plan. I I think this is a very different type of plan than other towns which don't have. The same housing makeup and the same real opportunities for affordable housing that Middletown has. So. I don't think that this plan is going to necessarily take us in a direction where. In the same direction that other other towns plans will. So I think. So although I think we can recognize that there's always going to be a need and we need to be aware of this. I think this plan will be remarkably different than than the other than the other eleven municipal plans we're working on. So. So so your your comment there of Sebastian, I think is is well taken. And I think we are aware of that. So with that, hopefully. Hopefully, everyone has their second devices ready and we can start with the polling.
Okay, awesome. So yes, hopefully that gave everyone a chance to log on to this URL. Just to test it out and see if it is indeed working for everyone. We have this question that. We assure has nothing to do with housing or affordability. But is equally as important. Okay, so looks like people have got the hang of it. I would love to know what all the other options are. Okay, cool.
But that's interesting.
None for chocolate. That is unusual. Okay, there we go.
There, there we go.
So everyone, everyone probably has a hang of it. This is how the the live polling works. So. Some pretty, some pretty neat software. So okay, excellent. Okay, so I feel confident that that we can move on. Okay, so just to get us started, as we mentioned at the beginning, this effort is part of the Greater Rivercog. Regional Housing Plan Project and Rivercog had held two virtual workshops. Introducing the project at the regional level and one was in October and one was in January. And we just wanted to know if anyone here attended either of those two workshops. Okay, so we've got half and half. Some people were there, which is excellent. Some good background information was provided there, but some people have not. So thank you for joining us at this point in the process. We're glad that you're here. And then just following up to that, as a part of that same program. There was a survey that was put together and it was distributed among all of the twelve communities and people could respond to the survey. Regarding their community in, and this was in the fall, did anyone take that survey? Okay, great. It looks like we have a good chunk of people who had taken the survey. So excellent. Okay. Okay, and then just bigger picture, you heard the entire introductory portion of this presentation. We gave a lot of educational information on Middletown, housing affordability, the concepts and how they apply to your city. So after listening to this presentation, do you feel that you have a better understanding of housing affordability? Okay, looks like everyone has said yes. So there we go. We achieved the purpose of the presentation. So. That was the key goal number one. So definitely glad, glad to hear that. So, okay. So what we're going to do for this section is we, as I described, we have five potential housing strategies. These are ideas that we think. Potentially fit in with the goals and needs of Middletown. But what we would like is to really hear your feedback on whether these five seem to be on the right track. If you feel that they are, they may ultimately be the five or so strategies that make their way into the final housing plan. But that's why we're here to get your feedback. If they don't necessarily all seem to appeal to everyone. There's always options to go in a different direction and that is absolutely why we're here this evening, because we would like to know that. So I'm going to go through each of these five. I'm going to present what the strategy is. If it's applicable, I'm going to give a case study or an example of somewhere else locally where the strategy is being utilized. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about what that would actually mean if Middletown was to go about trying to achieve said strategy. So the first strategy is accessory dwelling units. So accessory dwelling units might be a concept you're familiar with. They're, you know, relatively trendy at the moment. You might read about them in the news or see photos of them. Or hear them talked about in your community or elsewhere. ADUs are small dwellings that sit on the same property as a single family home. As a kind of secondary or subordinate dwelling to the main dwelling on the property. ADUs can provide naturally affordable housing options because they're typically small, no more than one or two bedrooms, limited in size. So that keeps their overall costs down if they are to be rented. They can also provide the homeowners of the main home with an additional income if they were to put them up for rent. And then that can help them with their actual housing costs for their main home. So it can kind of be a twofold almost housing strategy. They would only be naturally occurring affordable. They would not count as protected affordable units unless there was some type of a deed restriction attached to the unit. And there's actually been a lot of talk about ADUs at the state level. In twenty twenty-one, the state legislature did pass a public act. You may have heard of Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine. The state is really trying to encourage all communities across the state. To really enable accessory dwelling units as a housing affordability tool and option. So there are some potential revisions or amendments that each community in Connecticut is potentially. Going to want to pursue in order to comply with this public act unless they choose to opt out. So that is another reason why this is a very relevant and timely conversation related to accessory dwelling units. Kind of in that vein, an example is the town of Mansfield decided to recently redo and update its zoning regulations to put together a very comprehensive. Accessory dwelling unit regulation where they tried to be relatively quite permissive, allow accessory dwelling units in a wide range of circumstances. Circumstances either detached or attached to the house. Those are usually the two types. Considering whether you will allow them to be detached or only attached, you know, and they tried to make. That it can be anywhere up to a thousand square feet, which makes them, you know, more livable than if you put relative, really. Very small or restrictive size limitations on them. And they will require that the town planner in Mansfield recertifies that everyone who has an A D U has one every five years. But otherwise, this has been, they found it to be a successful and they underwent, you know, a very thorough process. To come up with these new regulations which they feel will encourage more people to utilize ADUs in their community. So what would this look like if Middletown was to try to pursue, you know, some improvements or revisions to their accessory dwelling unit? Regulations. So this would start with wanting to take a review of your existing A D U regulations. Seeing if there's areas where you think they could be loosened up, they could become more permissive. So that there is the opportunity that more people could take advantage of them or utilize them, allow greater flexibility in some of the areas. Whether that means adding the avail, the option to have a detached unit, allowing the conversion of accessory structures on your property. Potentially upping the size limit, lowering the parking regulations. These are all strategies that make ADUs. Something that it makes it easier for people if they would want to utilize one on their property. Then even if you do do the the regularly revisions to your regulations, there's kind of a second component, which is kind of the awareness and education piece. Education piece. A lot of people just don't know what an A D U is or know that it's an option for them or something that might meet their needs. So another then kind of second sub step could be increasing awareness of what ADUs are and that people can utilize. And install one on their property. This could be done through handouts, brochures, a section on the planning department website. A list of frequently asked questions to try to also help people understand how the zoning process works. And how you actually go about getting an A D U and getting one permitted through the planning and zoning department and process. So those are kind of two different. Components that would bring accessory dwelling units as a housing affordability strategy to Middletown. So this question is just how familiar are you with ADUs? Do you have an A D U? Do you know anyone who has one? Maybe you've heard of the concept? Or maybe this is brand new to you. What is your level of familiarity with this concept? Okay, so some people say that they know someone in Middletown or elsewhere that has one. And half of people said that they've heard of them, but they don't know anyone else that has one. No one here has an A D U on their property. Maybe, maybe that could be changed in the future. So that's definitely good to know. And then would you potentially support exploring ways to promote ADUs as a housing option in Middletown? Is this something that you would potentially feel comfortable with as an option to add? Some of these naturally occurring units. So we've got about. Sixty-three percent or so of people are saying yes, thirty-eight percent or so are saying no. When we get to the open ended discussion at the end, you know, we'd love to hear why. Why you may have voted the way that that you did. We'd love to hear why you may be a proponent of one strategy or not. And you know, that would be a very interesting way to open up the discussion. So keep that in mind. Excellent. Okay, so moving just to strategy number two. Strategy number two is this concept called middle housing. So middle housing is kind of exactly what it sounds like. It sits in the middle of kind of the lowest density housing concepts and the highest density housing concept. So just like that graphic on the bottom shows. It's, we're talking about housing that's somewhere in between a single family house and a, you know. Medium or high density apartment building. So the types of housing that fall under this category includes things like two family, three family homes. Small fourplex buildings, a concept called cottage courts. And the idea between behind middle housing is that these are typically compatible in scale and form with single family homes. Often in the sense that if you were to actually look at it from the exterior, you might not actually know that it's not a single family home. But it is divided into more units, but it's in the same scale as a single family home. So it's intended to be in the same neighborhood. On the same block mixed together with single family housing so that you're achieving more density, but without changing anything about the character. Scale or nature of that neighborhood or street in any way. It can be achieved by either building these new from scratch as new construction. Or you could take larger homes and you can just convert them into a number of units by dividing them. If you have a lot of oversized single family homes. And what this is, is a concept that can best be achieved in walkable areas. Town centers and village districts. So in the various, you know, villages and town. Centers throughout Middletown, if you have walkability to transportation amenities. You know, shopping and retail, these are the best places to add some of this kind of middle or low to mid density housing. There's a couple of different examples. One of the types is this cottage court example, which is actually taking one piece of property. But then placing a number of very small cottage type homes. More recently, you might just call them tiny homes since those are pretty trendy these days. But you could fit about eight or so on one single parcel. They kind of can be, they can all face each other and share common open space and amenities. And this is a way to ensure that people still have their own single family home, but it's small in size and compatible with. Other single family neighborhoods. These are kind of common specifically in the Pacific Northwest. But there's no reason that they can also be brought over to our part of the country. Another more kind of common style would just be a duplex. Duplexes are, were very common architectural housing styles. In the United States, especially the Northeast in the nineteen twenties and thirties. But they were, it was, the housing moved in a different direction after that time. So in a lot of cities, urban. Communities particularly, you'll still see duplexes, but we don't build a lot of duplexes anymore. But they can be one to two and a half story detached structures with two units. You can either have kind of the stacked model on top of each other or the side by side model. And often they have the appearance of a single family home, just like the images that you see on the bottom. So what would it look like if Middletown wanted to achieve this kind of middle housing strategy? It could involve amending the zoning regulations to increase, allow for increased density. In specified appropriate areas of Middletown, specifically your neighborhood. in specified appropriate areas of Middletown, specifically your neighborhood and village centers. You could allow for some middle housing developments by right, which would make it somewhat easier to achieve them. You would want to target the areas that are closest to your amenities. You could encourage the conversion of existing single family homes where it could be appropriate. And these units could either be considered naturally affordable, or you could combine this concept with other strategies to encourage deed restricted affordable units for these, you know, somewhat smaller, potentially lower priced units. So do you think that you could support this middle housing concept and these middle housing unit types in the appropriate locations in Middletown? How do people feel about that? Looks like everyone has said yes. Maybe a couple people are unsure, but that's good to know. Excellent. So again, you know, we're, we're talking about identifying the most appropriate areas across the city for something like this. And then just a second follow up question. Do you have a sense of which specific unit types you would see as most favorable for Middletown? Obviously, you know, some of them are relatively similar, but we have the different styles. So it looks like people feel good about
You can pick more than one.
Family units, yes.
So you can pick more than one if you, if you think multiple are.
Okay, so got some people interested in, in all, all of the different types potentially, you know. You know, it's an interesting array of options. So, you know, different ones fit in different contexts appropriately. So awesome. That is very good to know. Thank you. Okay, the next strategy we're going to talk about is the micro unit concept. So micro units are kind of an interesting concept. They are basically exactly what they sound like. They are very small apartments, but they're fully equipped apartments that have their own kitchen and their own bathroom, but they're just smaller than even a conventional studio would be. They can typically range from 250 to 350 square feet. They, as a result of their small size, they typically lease at approximately 20 to 30% lower than your conventional kind of studio or apartment. There is a large opportunity to convert existing apartment buildings into these smaller units. And they tend to be the most appropriate in urban areas that are near transit services and walkable amenities. So I mean, this is not something we would definitely be advocating in other parts of the Rivercog region, but Middletown is, is unique, as we've discussed. And as we also discussed, those, those statistics about 70% one to two person households. So a huge number of them are single person households, which really is the target for this type of housing. And if you're one person and you're looking for somewhere that might be more affordable and you're kind of really, really focused on, you know, location is kind of the biggest thing. And you feel like you could, you know, sacrifice a little bit on, on space in order to be able to afford your own place to live. That's where micro units really come in, where they really found their target audience. There is actually quite a few examples around the Northeast. This just happens to be one example in Boston, where a new micro unit community of 38 units, a portion 23 were micro units ranging anywhere from 368 to 504 square feet. They converted this factory building. The rents for that building happened to start at $16.99, but that is Boston. So I would say that they're, they're definitely higher there. But the idea is that, you know, these can provide living options for people that might not otherwise be able to get their own place to live. And just naturally, they're going to be lower in price because of their size. And so this is a fitting option for potentially some people. What would it involve to actually create some micro units in Middletown? And maybe Merrick might also be able to chime in a little bit later about, you know, whether this, this actually could be a reality in Middletown. But what it would involve would be some zoning amendments. Again, it could be targeted to a specific area where this would be appropriate, but some changes to site and density requirements like lot coverage, height setbacks and interior space requirements might need to be loosened a little bit. You would want to review any existing minimum unit size regulations in the building code. Sometimes they do put size minimums on units and these do tend to be smaller. You can consider requiring an affordability set aside threshold for any developments of this kind. It's important to encourage certain types of common spaces in buildings like this, since they obviously don't have a lot of their own personal space. They depend a lot on shared amenity space. You'd also want to explore the parking requirements for each one of these units. That impacts the feasibility of a building like this. And you'd want to review potentially the permitting process and how these types of units could get approved in a city like Middletown. So it's an interesting concept, a little bit, you know, not typically run of the mill, but there's definitely a potential need that could be met. So could you support the concept of micro units, you know, in appropriate places or locations in Middletown to provide the housing targeted at these individual households? So it looks like quite a few people have said yes. Few people are not sure, potentially possibly a no, but excellent. This is very, very good to keep in mind. If you just had to, you know, put your, put your, you know, best thought out there, what would you feel would be an appropriate minimum size for a micro unit? So, you know, they can definitely range from the very small to kind of the slightly more moderate size. So we just put the options 250, 350 or 500 square feet. So it looks like a lot of people are feeling like 350, 500. Other people are not sure. It can be very hard to visualize sizes like this, but this is just, you know, just kind of your first thought. So excellent. Cool. Very cool. Okay, just going to quickly move on to the next one, and this one's actually quite tied to the micro unit conversation. So to discuss micro units and the feasibility of things like that, kind of a stumbling block often to that, that type of development, or often a lot of multifamily development is parking requirements. Specifically, if we're talking about the micro units, a project like that would have minimal feasibility if the parking requirement standards remained, remained high, remained the same as they already are for all other developments across Middletown. So often in order to increase the feasibility of that type of project, a municipality needs to at least be able to have flexible or lower off-street parking requirements. Off-street parking is very expensive to add to a multifamily development. And it's also not even physically possible for a lot of lots, depending on their size, their shape, soil conditions, things like that. Parking requirements significantly increase construction costs. And if they have to spend a lot to put in parking, parking structures, underground parking, the developers pass the cost of the parking right onto the tenants or the owners, which increases the rent of these types of buildings. So for a concept like micro units, if the idea was to provide low cost or at least lower cost units, having to then pass on high parking costs would, you know, partially defeat the purpose of the affordability behind the units. That actual image on the right shows that when building small sized apartments, like a two bedroom apartment on that floor plan, the size of the parking spaces that go with the unit are almost the same size as the unit itself. So that just kind of gives you a spatial sense of kind of like how much space it takes just to provide parking when you're already trying to just provide the apartment units themselves. Car ownership trends are also just decreasing across cities as people adapt to modern needs and take advantage of transit or biking or walking to work or anything like that. And not to mention that the more parking you have, the more impervious surface that you've created, which impacts runoff pollution and limits the amount of green space and open space in your city. So a case study from Cambridge, Massachusetts, not too far away, was that in 2020, Cambridge created an affordable housing overlay zone. And inside of the overlay zone, it allows projects to waive their off-street parking requirements. So if you are providing an affordable housing project, then you can waive your off-street parking requirements. So the two kind of go hand in hand. If you can prove that you're going to be providing 100% affordable housing projects, you can have the added benefit of waiving the parking in order to have an overall more economical project. You know, obviously this is something that should be, you know, explored. You have to look at parking needs in your community and kind of what different residents need and what the right number of provided units. It doesn't have to be a total waiver. It could just be a lowering or a reduction. So it's definitely something to consider, but it helps with the feasibility of particularly affordable housing projects. So what would it take to achieve lowering the parking requirements in Middletown? It could be done through a zoning amendment. It could be tied just to affordable housing development. It could be tied to specific portions of the city. There could be different triggers for what, you know, what classifies or qualifies for parking reduction. You could do it based on a development's proximity to transit access. You could look at the neighborhood walk score, how walkable is that neighborhood? And if it's very walkable, you don't need as much parking. You can use other similar relevant metrics that can be studied so that this is a well thought out revision and amendment. And then you can also try to promote and allow a range of alternatives to providing parking, such as buildings that provide transit passes or shared parking, off-site parking. They add pickup or drop off areas for ride shares. So trying to make it conducive to other modes of transportation if you're going to lower the amount of parking. So could you potentially support reducing the parking requirements to facilitate housing such as micro units or some other type of kind of similar housing concepts in order to increase their feasibility? We've got, some people are saying yes. Others are saying no, and, and some are not sure. And that's very fair. It's definitely a very nuanced conversation to be had with a lot of factors to be considered. But this is, uh, this is helpful to know. And as I said, we'd, we'd love to hear comments or questions in the, in the chat later as to why you may feel a certain way. Excellent. Okay, so this is just the last one. I'll try to run through it as quickly as I can. So as we know, there is a lot of affordable housing already exists in Middletown. Obviously, we discussed this. We saw your 20, 22%. So obviously, we know that a lot of the affordable housing is, is there. And a lot of it is, is older. It has been around for a while. A lot of it could be some of the existing public housing that you have, but some of it could also just be some of the older naturally occurring affordable housing in Middletown that remains relatively affordable and the costs remain low. But the issue is that a lot of this housing is older and aging. And some kind of a common issue with some of this type of housing is that as it ages, developers come in and purchase it and would like to either tear it down or totally renovate it or rehab it. And once they've completed all of those renovations and upgrades, it's no longer affordable. It's actually become luxury. Or, you know, it's, it's going to move from the category of affordable out of the category of affordable. And that doesn't help you maintain that existing affordable housing stock that you have. So one key strategy here is to work with what you do have and ensure that through preservation and rehab strategies and programming and policies, what you have is going to remain affordable, but it's going to be able to undergo preservation and rehab, but retain its affordability. You know, by doing these different preservation efforts, you don't have to rely solely on new construction alone, which won't meet all of the demand and is going to cost much more, it's going to be much more expensive. Preservation allows the residents that live in this, in these units to remain where they are. Oftentimes, if a developer comes in and wants to upgrade the units, the current residents are going to be displaced. This is kind of the, that's the trend of gentrification. So the idea is to keep the current residents in the affordable housing that they already live in, preserve the mixed income neighborhoods that you have in Middletown and keep those communities intact because they have a lot of important social and cultural capital for those, for those existing residents. Obviously, it means that you don't have to find new open land for development. You're going to use what you already have. And there is a fair amount of local, state and federal funding for this that's definitely needed in order to be able to undertake these types of projects. A very good example that is nearby is in Hartford. There is an apartment building called the Billings Forge Apartments in the Frog Hollow neighborhood. And in 2013, they utilized low income housing tax credits, so federal funding. And they partnered with a nonprofit called the Preservation of Affordable Housing, Inc. to completely renovate this. It's a historic mill building that has 112 units, a number of which are Section 8 tenant assistance. And they did a just complete rehab of the entire building. They, but they were able to, because of the funding sources, keep all the housing affordability levels where they were. They even were able to kind of add new amenities and bring up the quality of the building. But they did upgrades to all of the units. They improved all of the common areas. And it cost $90,000 per unit, but they were able to keep everyone in place and not ultimately raise their costs. And obviously, that's where a lot of the grants or the federal or state funding programs come in. But ultimately, it was a really great project. So how would Middletown go about trying to do similar types of programming? You can look at different things like regulating current rents, protecting existing buildings from being converted to condominiums, work with landlords to keep affordable properties viable so that the landlords have reasons or incentives to keep the buildings the way that they are. You can get legal assistance and eviction prevention programs, incentives for tax relief for affordable rental housing landlords and owners. You want to discourage the loss of affordable rentals through fees and demo taxes in order to kind of put that extra incentive for people who own affordable housing buildings to keep them intact. You can do things like adopt a first, write a first refusal policy for tenants to purchase their building if it looks like it's about to be purchased out from under them. You can look at these different preservation inventories that identify all of the affordable rentals in your community that might be going off the rolls in the future. Again, utilizing programs like the low income housing tax credits and partnering with the different nonprofits, like the Hartford example, to kind of look at the different affordable housing buildings and projects that exist in Middletown and what you can do to keep them in their current state or, you know, ultimately even upgrade and improve them for their current residents. So which would you see as a preferable strategy for affordable housing in Middletown? Would you like to see an emphasis on the preservation and the rehab of the existing affordable units? Or would you be more in favor of building new affordable units or a combination of both? Okay, so it looks like a lot of people are in favor of both, definitely. A combination can definitely be key. But, you know, with some emphasis on preserving, you know, the existing stock that obviously you have in, in great supply in Middletown, which is, which is a great place to start. Awesome. Okay, excellent. So now that we've gone through all five of the strategies, this is just the final question we have here. It involves you ranking the five strategies that we presented from your most preferable being number one to your least preferable being number five. So in the polling software, it gives you the opportunity to assign a little number next to each one of the choices. And it will, there's little arrows, oh, there's little arrows, and you put them in the order from top to bottom based on most preferable.
And if you're on your phone, you might have to double tap on it.
Yeah, if you just see the, the, the option and you click on it again, you get a little set of arrows. So, okay, so it looks like the strategy for preserving and rehabbing existing housing stock as well as middle housing are kind of rising to the top. Give people a few more minutes to log their answers. Okay, middle housing, followed by accessory dwelling units. And then the micro units with kind of the associated parking requirements concept are coming in fourth and fifth. So excellent. This, this is very, very useful information. It helps us get a sense of what, what the public and the community in Middletown see as the most kind of appropriate strategies that they would feel like they could support and would feel comfortable with seeing in, in their neighborhoods. And this is extremely helpful and we, we take all of the results from this poll and we, we save the results and we will continue reviewing them as we're moving forward with this process. So thank you everyone so much for participating in the live polling. I'm just going to do just a, just a super quick recap here of kind of I'm just going to do just a, just a super quick recap here of kind of where we are and where we're going. We are obviously just based on the exercises that we just did and the great feedback that we got from you all. We're going to continue to refine and develop these strategies based on your input tonight. This will help us start to actually draft the plan itself, the actual eight dash thirty G plan. Putting the narrative together and creating the plan document. Once we have a draft of the document, it will be available for public review in mid-spring. Once we have the, the draft and then we're able to finalize the draft, the target is to formally adopt the eight dash thirty G plan in time to be able to submit it to the state to meet that June first deadline that we had talked about. That is required by the state, and we are well, you know, on our way to, to reaching that target. So that you will have your plan officially adopted and submitted by the deadline. So that's where we are. There is always the option to, we would love to hear from you if you want to reach out to the planning department at any point in this process. I believe you could also email RiverCog at any point, I believe they have an info at river cog dot org email. That you can send any questions or comments to, and we're going to also open this up to question and answers, I see that there were more questions in the chat popping up as we're going through. So I'm going to probably stop sharing my screen so we can open the floor to questions and try to answer the ones that popped up or any new ones that you might have now that you've heard the entire presentation. So thank you everyone so very much. I'm going to shop, stop sharing, there we go.
Um, so now we, I'd like to open it up for questions and discussion. Let's see. Okay, so let's see if there's any questions that we haven't addressed. Yes, this presentation will be available on our website, so, and just check that website. It may, probably won't go up until tomorrow, but check back there, you'll find. All right, so let's see. We had, we had a comment about micro units and shipping containers, I am familiar with some developments. There's actually one that you passed on ninety-five in Providence. So, so thank you for that suggestion, Mary Ellen. Let's see, any other questions in the chat? Let's, let's open it up, if people want to use the raise hand function or just raise their hand in their, in their, if they have the video on, we'll call on you. Go ahead, Mary Ellen.
This is a great presentation and it's, as someone who's been in the affordable, sort of housing felt rent work for about twenty-two years, it's very exciting that Middletown and the whole valley is taking us on. One of the things, shipping containers are very efficient. They were originated in Sweden, I believe, or Holland for workforce housing and university housing. That could be something very attractive to Westland, and they are very efficient to build. Also, the tiny villages is something that is taking in a reaction in the West, mostly out West, in solving chronic homelessness as a a new model, and I've talked to several of you on this call, and it's, it is a tenth of the cost of building a building like Liberty Commons, which is a as you know, supported affordable thing for formerly homeless. So I, I really believe in a long-term strategy for our significant home population that are never going to fit into a tenant-based affordable housing unit like a Liberty Commons or scattered site. To really consider to look at that because Department of Housing and HUD are getting very interested in bringing it. So applaud you, I think there's great ideas. Obviously, as a housing provider now in scattered site, we are struggling to find landlords. So that type apartment is extremely tight in this market. So anyway, I can help happy too, but this was an excellent presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. And, and that is something which, you know, the finding homes for people who are experiencing homelessness is, is an issue that, that we've, that we see throughout our region. One of the topics that our regional plan, which was recently adopted this past fall, addresses is the Alice Community, which is the asset limited, income constrained employed. So these are people who are teetering on the edge of, of, of potential homelessness and other, other, other issues. So, yeah, we are aware, we are aware of that and, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Oh, Kellin, go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much, really appreciate everyone's, everyone joining tonight, really appreciate the team from, from the Cog, Director Gold, of course, the team at SLR, thank you to Karen and Robert, of course. Wanted to circle back around on parking and ask the team to take a look at recent PZ Commission agendas that we've had here, recent item that we've been discussing that we will be, I believe, making further progress on in our next meeting is related to affordable housing development in the downtown business district. And what we've found in the course of that is that there is certainly an appetite for abiding by our plan of conservation and development, trying to think more proactively and progressively about affordable housing and mixed use. However, we really ran into this parking issue just again, and will continue to. And so when we considered something like, how, how do we adjust our parking requirements? And, you know, encourage or discourage, however you want to look at it, people needing a place for their car while also viewing living downtown as an amenity. I mean, this is something that is very tangible for us here in town, you saw that reflected in the course of the survey results as well. So, um, you know, please take a look at our, our recent docket and the record of what we've discussed. And any support we could get in future presentations or in the write-up to comps for us, what is New Britain doing to adjust parking requirements? What is Manchester doing to adjust parking requirements? What are some of these similarly sized cities doing? To try and move forward while also being conscious for the business community and existing residents for parking? We need answers for this because we have a limited supply of parking, it has to be a huge part of our economic development going forward. Has to be a part of our, the beautification of our city and our complete streets plan as well. How do we incorporate parking while also, again, trying to encourage pedestrians and things like that and more walkable cities? So however, Cog and the team at SLR can support us in providing comps and providing solutions that are much more tangible. Being lofty and ambitious is great, and it's something that we really aspire to here in town in a number of ways. But we also need that short-term plan, how, whether it's as simple as like revisions to our existing code and how we can sort of guide those. Or even more long-term about severely and dramatically reducing parking requirements, so thank you.
Yeah, I think that's great, we, I'll definitely make note, you know, that we can, you know, look at, we'll look back through your, your P and Z minutes. I'll talk with Merrick about that for sure, definitely look at other communities. You know, we just want to, we definitely want to keep in mind that we want to look at other cities that are comparable to Middletown. I know you can see things that Hartford and New Haven have done, but you know, we need to keep in mind that, you know, they do have different circumstances than Middletown. So we'll definitely try to look for some, you know, kind of equivalent things that would, would make sense to, to compare Middletown to. And yeah, we can, we can work at, you know, defining the action steps that go along with the strategies and making, you know, potentially some short-term versus maybe some longer term. We want to make sure that the, the goals and objectives are attainable and realistic and not just entirely aspirational. So we'll definitely, definitely keep that in mind, so thank you.
Thank you. And, and I just want to introduce Megan Juflis, our senior planner at River Cog. She is our project manager for this, on the River Cog side for this project. She had a conflict earlier, but I'm glad that she can, that she can join us at least for the question and answers, so. And, and I think the issue of parking is a good one. The city does have a number of city-owned lots, and, and there is ample street parking in many areas. So I think cities are, are realizing that they do not necessarily need the parking that, that the manuals say we do in, in many contexts. And also, doing so encourages people to use public transit, to walk, to bike, free parking is not free, it's actually quite expensive. And, and it comes at costs both dollar-wise, but also comes at cost from our communities and the vitality of our downtowns. When, when a good portion of the land area of our downtown is parking lots.
I think I would add one thing to that in support of Mayor Ben, because everywhere I go lately, everyone's crabbing about parking, let's be quite honest. And I, I think Connecticut is a culture and our small towns are a culture where everybody thinks parking is free and you should have pull up to your store. And I think, go to other cities, go to Boston, go to New York, they've solved those issues. And it's, it's training our, educating our community that parking is changing in our world. And it's not going to be what it was twenty-five years ago. And, and I think that's part of that, whatever we do, we have to educate that we're moving into a new era with this city. And parking will be addressed in many ways. But it is a hot topic in town, almost every meeting I go to now, somebody's grabbing on parking, I'm like, no, get over it. So that's just my little two cents of what I hear.
I, I will just add to, to that, and thank you, Mary Ellen, I was typing in the chat as you started talking, so I'll just jump in. But that, I think that Middletown has pretty unique parking needs relative to a lot of other cities and towns in Connecticut, just in terms of it's just heavily retail and restaurant oriented downtown. Which also is pretty much all of the municipal parking is, is downtown, everywhere else. With the exception of sort of the North End and some of our other just more densely populated neighborhoods where there is a lot of street parking. It's just a lot of off-street residential parking in the rest of town, which, which translates to a lot of empty spots, unused spots all day long. And then with, for a few hours a week, really, really, really intense demand on the, on the Friday and Saturday night circuit. So I think that a lot of it is also improving wayfinding, improving, you know, people's local knowledge of the pedestrian routes and where it is, to your point, Mary Ellen, where it's easy to, where you can, where it's easy to park and take a three-minute walk. In fact, might be faster than, you know, circling until you find a closer spot. And so that's, that's an approach we want to look at as well to, because, because it is a real concern. There is a real supply issue that we've identified, but it is because it's, again, because it's a, it's a supply issue that only happens a few hours a week. We want to try to make sure we're not, we're not over-correcting and creating more problems.
I just want to piggyback on that, and as Mayor Florsheim, you know, alluded to, there's, you know, competition for parking spaces in very demand, peak demand parts, where if we have a more residential units fighting for the same parking demand where they get home from work and they need to find a place to park. That's within, you know, a safe relative distance from their home. So, but that, but that's goes to the point where residents in downtown would still have to get in a car and go to work or get in a car and buy the goods and services that they need. So as part of this, you know, solving this parking problem or housing problem, we have to make sure that we're encouraging, incentivizing, making, making it happen, having a diversity of like uses in our downtown where a resident can, can meet their everyday demands of working and shopping and getting the goods and services they need, so they won't need a car to, you know, get, to get what, what they need. So I don't think, I don't know if Middletown's quite there yet for to grow housing in a way where, you know, with there's a reduction in parking demand. But I think in the, within the context of this housing plan and the greater context of the plan of conservation development. That is kind of an overall goal that we have for the city moving forward. Other comments, questions from, from our attendees? And if not, let's, oh, go, go ahead, Brian.
Yes, thank you very much, first, I just want to briefly acknowledge, there was a comment put in the chat earlier. I had sent out the invitation to a bunch of people hoping they would join and get some traction. So that was an insensitive comment that showed up to my name, I do apologize for that, and Seb, I do apologize to you specifically, sir. Just on the affordable housing, so obviously, we talked about Middletown is doing better than anyone else in the region, you know, the, the numbers really do back that up. So with looking at preserving and expanding access to affordable housing as the executive director at the Coalition on homeling and housing and homelessness, that's something that I'm focused on. What efforts are we as a city putting into making sure that it's not all being segregated downtown? Because that's where the, the vast majority of the naturally occurring affordable housing currently is. And especially with the development of the River Force, the Riverfront. I imagine some of that's going to be going by the wayside as it starts looking nicer, so just wanted to pose that out there, I'm not sure if it's something that's been considered on the city level.
Yeah, so I mean, I think there are a number of the strategies presented were, you know, trying to target opportunities to add affordable housing options within traditionally single-family neighborhoods, so I mean, ADUs are definitely one. Those are specifically targeted and actually only allowed in single-family neighborhoods. So that's definitely one, as well as the middle housing. You know, the idea there being that it doesn't actually really change the character of the single-family neighborhoods themselves. If you were to just look externally, so that the impact is, is relatively low. But it does actually, at least in small quantities, add, you know, at least maybe two to three additional units in some of those ways. So I mean, those were definitely, not that the others were not also targeted towards different areas of Middletown, but I would say those specifically are actually meant to try to bring the housing diversity across the city and not just concentrate it.
I would, I would agree with that and just say, you know, I think that we have a lot of areas that are single-family zone and have single-family housing, right? And that, I think that some of, as housing evolves, as people's needs evolves, as, as the market evolves. I mean, we're seeing, you know, we had obviously unexpected and welcome demand in single, in the single-family housing market in Middletown over the past couple of years, but before that, you know, we very consistently were seeing single-family housing demand was, was more or less flat. Whereas demand for apartment units was, was, was sky-high. And, you know, there's a way to meet in the middle and, and in those single-family, you know, historically single-family neighborhoods with things like the accessory units, I would think. And, and there was something else I was going to say, but it's slipped my mind.
Okay, great. Anything else, Sam?
No, so I think, I, I think at this point, we should just maybe go over the schedule for the next steps in this project. And I don't know, Karen, you want to do that, or maybe I can welcome Megan to do it?
Whatever works, yeah, so I mean, as, yeah, I mean, so after this presentation, we're going to first, we're, we're going to make sure that this presentation, the recording, and then also the slides and also the poll results. We can have those posted somewhere that's accessible, we'll work with Merrick to get those posted on the Middletown website. So that anyone who wants to, who either was here tonight or couldn't make it, can review all of the materials. As we said, if you do have questions or follow-up, please feel free to reach out to either Merrick or River Cog. And they would make sure the comments get, get back to us at SLR. If anyone does want to add any, any feedback on any of the strategies or anything that you heard tonight. So that will definitely be the next step, after that, we'll be moving forward with working on the actual drafting of the plan document itself based on what we heard, and that's just a lot of fleshing out of mostly everything that was presented this evening, the strategies. You know, we will continue to analyze them and consider how they can be turned into actionable action steps. And those will be added into the plan as well, once there is a draft, it will be available for public review. So that people can see what the proposed draft is, and eventually, we will get to a finalized version of the draft. And there will be an adoption process that goes along with that, which will probably entail some form of meetings. Probably at least with a couple of different groups and bodies within. some form of meetings, probably at least with a couple of different groups and bodies within, within Middletown. So there may be some additional public comment that goes along with that. But ultimately, we're on track to meet this June first deadline for submitting your plan to the state. Simultaneously, River Cog will be working on its regional housing plan. So if you're interested in the bigger picture regional housing plan, you can also, we'll be following a pretty similar process with that in terms of a draft followed by some public comment period, and also an adoption of that one as well. So you're more than welcome to be paying attention to both at the Middletown level and the regional level to kind of get the whole, the whole picture for the whole project and how it all pieces together. So, yeah, we hope that you'll continue to just follow along. And thank you everyone so much for participating tonight.
And I missed the, the polling question where we asked you about how many people attended the regional presentations. But if you haven't attended and you're interested in following along with everything that we've done so far, those are also available on the River Cog webpage, which I put into the chat box when I jumped on. So please feel free to check those out as well and, you know, reach out to us or to Merrick if you have any questions.
Thank you all so much.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Night.